The date is 7/19, Monday 25th, 2017. The call is town meeting to order. And we entertain a motion to admit. Mr. Scholz.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following person be admitted to the meeting. Mr. Moderator, I move that the following person be admitted to the meeting. The board of selectmen's director, Garrett Colling, Town Attorney. Bill Lefond, Trains Church. Carol Leepro, County Clerk staff. Bob Marrow, Northham. Harold Miller, Estody. Al Barrera, 35th District, North Credit. Allison Gaines, Performing Arts Manager. Lauren Stevens, Parks Department Head. Matthew Cooper, IT Director. Amy Buckwitz, Director of New Services. Michael Erbick, Police Department. Daniel McNeigh, Town Planner. Debbie Carbone, Assessment Manager. John Monarch, Superintendent of Schools. Michael Cobb, Director of Finance, School Department. Daniel Mann, Troop 750. Andrew Lafferty, Director of Public Works. Mark Clark, Water Superintendent. Mary Evans, Director of Blocker. And Ryan Hay, Boy Scouts.
I have a motion to admit, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? The visitors may enter the hall. The visitors may enter the hall. While they're being seated, town boards and committees should sit in the first bunch of rows in the center section. All registered voters should be wearing a red ribbon. All visitors should be wearing a black ribbon. All visitors who are not part of the town board or committee should sit to my right, down in the front. The tellers for this evening should be need to take a hand count. Counting the front and my left, Ed McGrath. Counting the center section, Joff Simons. And counting to my right, Sean Delaney. Couple of rules for this evening. Please make sure you're recognized by the moderator before you speak. When you are recognized, state your name and address to the record. We have two runners with microphones tonight. And they will bring them to you. So don't start speaking until you've received the microphone. Please shut your cell phones off so as not to interrupt the meeting. And the runners for tonight are Jayce Stats and Zach Stats. I'm going to little round his applause for their assistance. And Mr. Messeri, did you want to...
Yes.
My preference.
Thank you, Moderator. I guess Mr. Yul in the audience, if you could just please stand up. For the selection, we'd like to thank Mr. Jeff Yul for his service as a member of the Board of Selectmen for past three years. Which is previous to a total of six years in his term of Board of Selectmen. So at this point, thank you, Mr. Yul.
Mr. Prisco, if you'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please rise. I am the President of the United States of America. To the Lord, for which he stands, foundation, honor, God, individual, liberty, justice, law.
One more item. If you need a copy of the warrant, raise your hand and someone will bring it down. We have other copies available. Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to sentence a reading of the warrant. Any refer to the document by number. I prefer that the sentence be read over the return of service by conference.
I have a motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article one. Mr. Messeri.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article one as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion. Any discussion? Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Messeri.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend it.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Mr. Messeri.
I think that when we put this article in when we sign the warrant, just in case there is deficit in any one of the operating 2017 operating budgets, and you get close to the year where you're able to say clearly there is a spending, then it's what we pass in the article.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article two, Mr. Messeri.
Mr. Moderator. I move to transfer from free cash to some of $60,000 to fund the deficit in the FY2017 snow nice budget. As specified in Article two, as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make recommendations? Mr. Messeri.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend it.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance Committee unanimously recommend it.
Further discussion?
Just a brief comment, for the Board of Selectmen, when we set the budget, and in the beginning of the budget, we put money for some nice, and we also hold in the budget process, another $275,000 of ours. And then, we hold, hoping that we can run the suspended out of free cash, additional money this year, we can develop other dollars of ours. And clearly, we only need $60,000 to close up the year.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article three, Mr. Messeri.
Mr. Moderator. I move to transfer from free cash to some of $896,637 to transfer from FY217 onto the debt service operating budget. Line 94, the sum of $200,000 for a total of $1,096,637 to be added to the capital improvement stabilization fund, established in Article five in the October 2007, as specified in Article three, as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen's recommendation, Mr. Messeri.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend it.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance Committee unanimously recommend it.
Further discussion?
I guess, as you remind, 2017 established this fund, and later we set up the capital improvement program, guaranteed, we have a lot of money each year for capital sentences, both through borrowing and through available cash. And we're now putting the additional funds into that, which we later sent, as we get it for some of the further items in the warrant.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article four, Mr. Messeri.
Mr. Moderator. I move to transfer from the FY2017, what I continue, the sum of $511,000, I'm sorry, $511,000, $511,057 to be added to the water stabilization fund, as specified in Article four, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendations for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Messeri.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend it.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance Committee unanimously recommend it.
Further discussion? Mr. Messeri.
This is money that wasn't suspended this year in order budget. And it's based on the board increasing order rate to do in June for the purposes of funding the capital cost of moving to the NWR, which will be our long-term assets for the year.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article five, Mr. Scholz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article five, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Scholz.
Pass over the article.
The Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously recommend it.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article six.
My move to transfer from pensions liability, line 30, in the fiscal year 2017 operating budget, voted under Article 20, for the June 6, 2016, town meeting, the sum of $255,000 of ours, to be added to other post-employment, other post-employment benefits by the trust fund, as established in Article 36, on the June 3, 2013, town meeting, as specified in Article six, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendations for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Scholz.
I recommend it.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance Committee unanimously recommend it.
Further discussion? Mr. West.
Andy, just a quick question, what's the total amount that we have, on the, on the account?
Uh, $578,700.
Now, look, look, there's a big time. What you just saw can't happen tonight. We won't get through the business. It's not private dialogue.
So the $255,000, I thought $255,000 on top, I had to add up until 5 seconds.
This is a prevail, please.
The current balance of the old credit trust fund, at this moment, a total transfer of $250,000 to a $578,724. We're transferring $256,080, however, when we get to Article 15, the obligations, we are transferring that, those funds back out to cover the current term. There's another article that takes place later on in the warrant, and it's transferring $300,000 into the old credit trust fund. So we're putting $250,000 in, then we're putting $300,000 in, and then we're taking $250,000 out. So it's really only $250,000.
Just to clarify, the amount being transferred is $250,000 a year. That's why legal counsel came up to look at the motion. So I want to make sure you understand that's the figure, $250,000 a year. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article seven, Mr. Scholz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from solid waste management, line 50, fiscal year 2017 operating budget, voted under Article 20, for the June 6, 2016, town meeting, the sum of $25,000 to be added to the solid waste stabilization fund, established in Article 23, the April 2, 6, town meeting, as specified in Article seven, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendations for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Scholz.
Recommend it.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance Committee unanimously recommend it.
Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article eight, Mr. Scholz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to choose all necessary towns, certainly not elected by doubt, and determine what instructions shall be given.
Recommendations for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Scholz.
Recommend it.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Silver.
No option required.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept the current town report for the year 2016, as reported to the town office, as we finished to hear the report that the committee presented at this meeting.
I understand the Finance Committee has the report. Mr. Silver.
Well, good evening, thanks for coming down.
Can we move the microphone if we can't hear? Thank you. All right, so you're not as tall.
Or as tall. Most of the Finance Committee has several, like, we found, this report to have a, kind of, a while. But I really just like to make a few remarks. In short, we continue to concern that tight money and the escalating costs of providing all services to the town. The cost of goods and services continues to outpace forever. Over the American reaction, certainly there's certainly areas to guess that's unlikely. Through the cooperation and efforts of the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, the Finance Committee, the Financial Plan Committee, and many of the other board and committees in the town, the budget gaps have been closed for this year. In addition, the Finance Committee continues to concern about funding the stabilization fund. This fund, the tax tab, will lead to true urgency. It is recommended that this fund maintain 5% of net revenue. At present, the fund is 227,000 of, short of this recommended level. Although, no one agrees to be added tonight, we must seriously consider adding to this fund on a monthly basis. Thank you very much, and enjoy the evening.
Mr. Moderator. Who was that? Wait for the microphone.
Thank you, John Borreth, Department of Labor. Very excited, from that short session there, concerns of future budget gaps. I won't go on in any great detail, but I'd ask the Board of Selectmen if they will be responding at some point in the future to my little better transfer.
Mr. Prisco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We will be responding, not particularly how many people visit, but we will hold you up to the next Board of Selectmen meeting in the future, we always have a hold on the comment, we can have a discussion there. I think fans can more easily, but we have to understand what our job right now is, try to create economic, uh, try to create new revenue for the public, for the future, and that's what we're always paying our attention. And we try to do things with a thorough base budget, we've been putting a lot of people out there, and I certainly don't really understand if you operate that, but we would love to have that, continue to have that discussion in the future, or you.
Could I just follow, Mr. Moderator?
Okay, if you're seeking recognition, don't shout out, please stand out. I will call on you to bring the microphone, okay? Because I can't, if you're shouting instead, then I don't know where you are. But I will caution you, this is a town report, so we're supposed to hear the report, but...
I understand, yeah. Given that, I'm not one to respond to my head, but, you know, the questions are, they're very serious questions for the town. But I guess, a wild question, if you wouldn't mind, for the audience, is there any plan to show in the town budget to delineate between discretionary and non-discretionary funding? So that the town, the people who come to town meeting can understand what is on the table that could be sacrificed, like discretionary funding versus non-discretionary funding? Because what we keep hearing is that these budgets go up every year 45%, or taxes go up every year about 5%, and it's just a number in the cycle. And until we get to the point where we're discussing discretionary spending and limiting discretionary spending, I don't think we're ever going to solve this problem. Is there, is there any possibility of we able to strip that? So my question, is there, will you be able to discriminate in the town budget where the discretionary budget liabilities are versus discretionary?
Mr. Prisco.
Well, I mean, honestly, we're all kind of, really, at the other end, it's 22, except that, if it's very, my budget's very good, and our meetings are very good. There's a lot of meetings we need, and a lot's hoping to be, to be, where every line is exposed and discussed, totally publicly. So discretionary, non-discretionary, all going and discussed and debated publicly. So I think it's already, it's pretty clear. So I don't really know what I mean by saying that.
Just to follow, the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen meetings, particularly in the time of budgets, is all posted in advance, and anyone's off the table, over meetings. We're going to move on to the next report at this time. Mr. Calhoun, you have a capital report for us.
Just a brief report on the charge of the Capital Planning Committee, not 16, of looking at the actual recommendations of the, that the, that the committee, but just wanted just to acknowledge the hard work of the committee, our life chair, Mrs. Dorf, and Julie Pocky, as our court this year, addition to those two folks, Mike Conney, Mike Cervino, Kathy Rova, Joe Fodi, Stig O'Leary, and all the selection, gentlemen, thank you, you're very welcome. The charge of the committee was to, and has been for the last several years, to, to review all of the requests from various town departments, schools, and enterprises for inclusion and recognition. We've done that, we've met with all of the, the department heads and representatives that came with them to help us, we looked at, equipped to, to be looked at, see what was going on, if they had any place. The overarching goal of the bidding and what we signed on, is that we would recommend to the Board of Selectmen capital layers that we thought were needed for the town in order to satisfy the vast majority of people in the town. And that in making that recommendation, we would not add to the operating budget to the debt service. Currently, the debt service is $1.1 million a year, has been for several years, and when we made our recommendations, we went through a combination of using the capital stabilization fund, bonding, free cash, versus appropriate amounts that fitted in that mandate and still, our debt service is $1.1 million of ours. We've done that in this year, and we'll see those recommendations in Article 16. Thank you.
But the Recycling Committee, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Ed McGrath, I'm a member of the Recycling Committee, and I got three things to tell you in less than five minutes. Number one, we have stats through month of April, town recycling rate is 24.2%. This fiscal year, we have avoided $72,826 in tipping fees at the incinerator. Surprisingly, recycling is down from last year by about 5%, and that's because of the drop in the collection of plastic, metal, and glass containers. Interest, also surprising, is paper is up, 136%. Trash is also up, 1.3%. So the committee encourages you, encourages you all to be vigilant at your recycling bin, maximize the materials that you edit in. And while we're on the subject of money, sometime around last September, North Credit surpassed a million dollar milestone in avoiding tipping fees, going back to FY2006. We'd said total since that year is $1,055,812 that by delivery side, we really avoided spending money to incinerate trash. Finally, number three, this Saturday is the special collection, at the Spender DPW Complex on Chestnut Street, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. For free, you can have papers traded, old files or documents traded, we have a scrap metal bin here around, that'll be available too. We're taking rigid plastics again, so if your daughter was walking on a prom walk tonight, and that little plastic slide that's been in your backyard for the last 15 or 18 years, we can recycle that. We'll be taking car batteries, fluorescent lamps, mercury thermometers, mercury thermostats, and battle ladders is free, there will be a fee, we're taking propane tanks again, $18 for your typical, excuse me, $8 for your typical barbecue tank, and tires will be collected also, and $3 for a regular car tire, there's more detailed information on the website for what's going to be, going to be collected, so we hope to see you there this Saturday. Thank you.
For the Board of Selectmen, related to the American Valley, we need your consultations of our, Mr. Prisco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I commonly hear, since I've been on the board... I commonly hear, since I've been on the board, why doesn't the town have a ride? Why doesn't the town have more transportation for our age community? Well, I'm happy here tonight to report that the board of selectmen has taken the action to join the American Valley, reach a transportation authority. I was sworn in last week beyond the void. We're going to work with that execute and bring a ride program for our age-based and disabled folks that live in town for a first time. It's a wonderful program. We're going to actually be able to use our hundred and two thousand dollars that we sent to the MTA that we didn't get nothing for. We can actually use that money to offset any expenses that we incur by offering our age-based, age-based community disabled a ring and ride program. So I just wanted to make sure we'll do that, and we will be hopefully executing it, getting it off and running late, sooner or later, toward. So between now and then, you're going to read more about it, you can hear more about it, get the details out there. Certainly, the one they wear, website, redevelop program, as they did today, and as a member of the Valley, you have transportation authority, click on the ring and ride program, and you get all the details. So the board of selectmen, very proud of having you offer our services and our age-based and disabled to get their points. Thank you.
Any other boards or committees that I didn't call on, to give a report? Back to the motion to accept the printed report and the reports we just heard. Further discussion? Saying no, all those who voted please say aye. Voted opposed? Unanimous? Article ten, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to authorize the board of all the works to accept easily on behalf of the town as specified in our ten and thirty in order.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen, recommenders.
For the finance committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? Saying no, all those who voted please say aye.
Aye.
Voted opposed? Unanimous? Article eleven, Mr. O'Leary.
Moderator, I move to authorize the board of selectmen to enter the comprehensive balance to the units of special slider, article eleven, which is taken into account.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen, recommenders.
For the finance committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? Saying no, all those who voted please say aye.
Aye.
Voted opposed? Unanimous? Article twelve, Mr. O'Leary.
Moderator, I move to approve such sum as may be allowed under chapter ninety four or other state or county reverse programs for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, or maintaining roadways within the town of authority specified in article twelve, which is taken into account.
The recommendations for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary. Recommendations for the selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen, recommenders.
For the finance committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? Mr. Capazudo.
The ready to exit out, twelve coming drive, the ready to secure a certain schedule for our improved improvements. I would like to announce that we have a request.
Do you want to know where you have the list? False. There is a schedule for only the DPW director has put together in relation to those rules that are first qualified, and secondly, those that need repairments upon condition. So there is a schedule, we have it in the town hall, we have it in the chamber.
Further discussion? Saying no, all those who voted please say aye.
Aye.
Voted opposed? Unanimous? Article thirteen, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer, this lead in two thousand and seventeen, on the list line hundred forty-seven DPW, several basic expenses, the sum of two hundred and eighty dollars, pay bills prior year, as specified in article thirteen, which is taken into account.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen, recommenders.
For the finance committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? This does require forthwith, no hesitated prior year. Saying no further discussion, all those who voted please say aye.
Aye.
Voted opposed? Unanimous? Article fourteen, Mr. O'Leary.
My glasses. Mr. Moderator, I move to town appropriate, the total sum of eight million, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, for purposes of effectuating the town's interconnection, the MWRA water system, and specifically including expenditures, water systems improvements in town of ready, and all costs set and related thereto, as specified in article fourteen of our, and its funding therefore to authorize the trade of the group of the board of select to borrow said sum in pursuit to American law, chapter forty-one, section seven four eight, or any other rating authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. While the bonds issued here are shelf general obligations bonds of the town, it is anticipated that these bonds shall be repaid in the moderate price type. Further, the board of selectmen is authorized to pursue federal, state, or other grant funding, proceeds of which may be allocated towards said projects, and further, that any premium received by the town by the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this zone, thus any such premium applied to payment of costs issued to such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote of course, as mentioned in law chapter forty-four, section twenty, thereby reducing the amount of the rest of the bar and the pace of costs by a leg of bar. Further, to authorize the board of selectmen to take any other action necessary to carry over the town.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen, you may ask the recommenders.
The finance committee, Mr. Silver.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
I'm ready to get concealed quite fully here, we can just update us to where we are, and this is the continuation and actually bringing to fruition the actions of this previous town meeting to allow the town of authority to tie any immediate or immediate water purposes on that. And we received legislative approval, and I just want to say a part of a one, thank you very much, legislative delegation, Representative Rick Jones, Louis Ta, the tireless efforts leading this to fruition for us, and we proceed on behalf of, telling many numerous of those meetings. Also want to acknowledge the board of directors and high ropes of the investment and water resources, the authority, who are actively very closely with us, and again, the officials in town of ready, who have been extremely helpful in assisting us, bringing this to fruition. As we're aware, you know, we have a lot of resources when it comes to water, and we have to, for our current, for our current, right now, we're sixty to sixty-five percent of our outside, our district here. So it's important for us from an economic standpoint to ensure that we have long-term solutions for our biggest needs of water, the other we already presented to us, alternative kit. In late two thousand and sixteen, we received legislative approval to join the MWRA, just by legislative effort. Again, that's based upon a situation by town meeting, authorizing us to file special legislation to charge, which is all through the one that the town meeting is responsible for. We need a pump station to have the block circulate through the system, come incorporating an authorization last year, as appropriated money to allow the block to seek a site, or another site, and we purchased it because of the appropriation of the water site in early two thousand and seventeen. The permitting work continues, we anticipate filing, filing by the Kincat report in fall. The design work is ongoing, to date, it's set at one point two million dollars, the design work. We're anticipating finalizing the interminister's river with ready late this summer or early fall. We anticipate bidding construction of the project, which involves proof of status in town ready, as well as here, construction of the pump station, anticipate bidding construction on our bydate fourth of eighteen. Anticipate bidding construction and activating the interconnection by July first, two thousand and nineteen, that happens to coincide with our community's river handover, which we negotiated a five-year extension on our contract to that to supply the water tools that expires June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and anticipate the date, current tap on of the MWRA is July first, two thousand and nineteen, and on target for that as we stick it in. And then it's anticipated we'll decommission the town wells beginning two thousand and twelve. Again, this is a dead record for us, as far as moving forward, making sure that we have long-term supply, meaning the future needs of our community for our generations to come.
Mr. Theo.
Yes, Jeff, you're welcome. I'm so pleased to meet you. First of all, I'd like to give a good caution to the board of selectmen, declare that we will be more ready to support in our board, and yet, we can do that if we wish.
Feel free to worry about it, Jeff.
But if I can recall, I believe the state has, I don't know if it's authorized, but has offered to add additional funds to date the very refund of that project. When I show the purpose for the construction, a million dollars or a two point five million dollars, how would that play in here, and do we need to be in bond in that, we meant those funds, having promised those by the state?
Mr. O'Leary.
The wording in the act authorizes us to deposit the amount that we need, and then to go after or chase any grant that we can get, and then we reduce the quantity by whatever amount we see from one of those sources we need. There's nothing to finalize yet in relation to any additional grant money, although there's a lot of discussion, a lot of positive feedback, and again, just to anticipate that if we receive additional funding, whether it be from the pumping station or any other portion of this project, then we will just reduce the amount. And the discussions are ongoing, it's always a good...
That is a question, Mr. Theo.
Yes, thank you.
Further discussion? Someone seeking recognition?
Attorney Henry, twenty-nine twenty-five. I can't do it. Some people that, that, that here cannot even. Please, turn off the microphone. It's not the position, it's the overall volume. Thank you.
Man.
At least somebody on the other street, you want to run? I just have a quick question about the IHS paper, where is this system, where is this explained? Ready, water system, defense?
Mr. O'Leary.
The ready, part of, in order to, we're going to be getting it online through ready, from the MWRA, through ready, so they're going to require some upgrading of part of the system on Main Street in order to connect to with the pumping station on the Mill Street. So part of the structure costs associated with that, and ready, we're going to assume. This is the need for the upgrade is to increase the passive, bring it to us. The common system is adequate, so it's dangerous.
Further discussion? Sir.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary, for your description of this convoluted, uh, construction of pump station. I have a question. If the source of the funds, the local system is approved, construction of water, mega dollars, pump station, construction, two million five hundred and fifty thousand. Now, the bonds, where are you getting bond from, bank?
Yeah, just, yeah, it's a little hard, from the banks, through mining, for set very down, twenty, about thirty years, up to thirty years, Mr. Governor, Lord, mining, through the banks.
Okay, it's bonds, then if you, if you better buy the bonds, there has to be interest being paid.
Correct.
How much is the interest?
Current interest rates are, municipal lodges, current, current interest rates are municipal, around four percent, around four percent currently.
I didn't hear you.
Currently, four, around four percent, but it depends upon when we go on the bond.
Okay.
But currently, it's around four percent.
There's, there's no amount that you can give tonight, for the cost?
Not, not until we put it out to bid and get the bank's bid on the bond, so that we back, so we bid for the notes. So it's a competitive bid, but it's a break out, it's around four percent.
Further discussion? Okay, this requires two-thirds vote, and it's wanting is in law. All those who voted please say aye.
Aye.
Voted opposed? Unanimous? Article fifteen. Article fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, there'll be two motions pertaining to our team, which is a physically a two thousand and eighteen operating budget. Motion number one, I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sums set forth in the common headed selectment recommended in the line items one through one oh seven, excluding line ninety-four debt service, including the transfer of other funds, all as set forward in the budget detailed dated June fifth, two thousand and seventeen, totaling sixty-two million one hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. And further, the reliance with the department salaries and expenses shall be considered a single appropriation for each department, except for lines seventy-four through ninety-three education, and ninety-five to one oh seven, water, hill view, and parks and recreation enterprise funds.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen, recommenders.
Mr. Silver.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? Committee has a recommendation, which I want to... So the commander recommends to win zero, if you want to ask. Any further questions? Saying no, all those who voted please say aye.
Aye.
Voted opposed?
Aye.
Motion gathers. Is there a second motion for the budget?
Motion number two, I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sums set forth in the common headed selectment recommended in line ninety-four debt service, in the amount of seven million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars, including the transfer of other funds, all as set forth in the budget detailed dated June fifth, two thousand and seventeen.
The recommendation from the board of selectmen, Mr. McGrath.
Board of Selectmen, recommenders.
Mr. Silver.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Webster, the school committee. School committee recommends. Mr. McGrath. I just, by the catch of the whole room, there's lights shining everywhere. Yeah, there was this presentation still there.
Everybody here, okay? We have two slides drawn to the fiscal year 2018 budget. If you were watching or attending, the selection of budget area earlier in the year, we did the same presentation. Fiscal year 2018 budget goals, continue conservative revenue assumptions, maintain alternative reserves, institute legislative changes to labor contract negotiations, maintaining an affordable health plan, continuing to develop alternative resources, continuing to dedicate budget funding to the capital to the plan, which comes up on the next article, and continuing budget collaboration between the towns and schools to the financial planning team. And this is just a quick overview as to how our revenue is supplied. Twenty point eight million dollars for the six costs, twenty nine point six million dollars for the superpart operations, and general government fifty point two six five million dollars. This shows allocation of various resources after the costs are deducted from the raw revenues. This slide shows some of the areas where there were adjustments in revenue, tax levels by the appropriations to the town, new growth, which is seen adjusted. You'll see that there is a key piece of the budget by the fact that this conference we're in, the graduation, we're definitely seeing rate on the beginning requests, therefore we reduce that number down from fiscal year. The exclude debt is for projects such as the kindergarten school, which we've raised on both sides of the property, the now public area schools, the farm capital in the state of eighty, we're identifying here, you know, seeing where we remain modest in terms of local receipts, you know, approximately seven thousand dollars, and other financial sources of approximately five thousand dollars. You see down below again, the numbers allocated showing fiscal year 2018, six costs, general government, superpart, and then the previous fiscal year 17. Some key revenue adjustments, again, identified in some of them previously, the motor vehicle exercise is $50,000 increase, departmental revenue, $5,000, license permits, $10,000, the mill tax, approximately $5,000, used capital improvement, stabilization fund resources of $553,666, OPEC trust, $20,000, the annual reserve of $11,200. Can everybody still hear?
No.
No, okay, thank you, I'm sorry. Key expenditure drivers, health insurance increase $186,600, capital improvements $24,000, general liability $17,000, OPEC $50,000 as a boost, as a review for the UTR. Accounting and time assessment, just $203,000 increase, the reserve of $15,000 exemption to $15,000, and retirement support of $179,000. Just to note of this year 2018 health insurance, some of the evolved discussions over the discussions over the past ten months, we had a new project on our existing health insurance carrier at a 10% rate increase. We dilated an market for potential change of carrier, considered a new partially self-funded model of health insurance. Combined use of partially self-funded model, known as participating in funding arrangements, with the change in carrier, our health insurance policy degrees was reduced to 2.5%, with the potential for future savings depending upon performance of our plan when we have money for this meeting. And this is just a note delineating our current bill, the reserves at the beginning of this town meeting, free cash $1.6 million, stabilization fund $22,000 plus $1 million, capital stabilization $1.85 million, wire to the action to play that plays the rate this evening, water recharge approximately $450,000 prior to the action of the year this evening, solid base stabilization $100,000 prior to the action of the year this evening, water recharge $11,000 prior to the action of the year this evening, and itself tower fund $620,000, $750,000. This shows identification of the lower server budget, which were recommended to the visiting recommended town meeting for the tickets, our operations.
Making this to work. Questions for the discussion? Mr. McGrath.
Thank you for that presentation. Ed McGrath, eat more road, thank you. I'm going to the Warren article on top of the table right now, the debt service. Can we go over that again? It seems like really fast, I'm trying to keep track of all the six point nine figures. And I know it's still paying for modules. It's probably like it's still paying for modules, buildings after the old school and area schools.
Mr. Kellerman.
Yes, maybe capital, when there aren't any.
Lean in.
Through you, just moderator.
Yes, maybe projects that were previously authorized, some of which should be on already used by the town for the way it is.
And then up the back.
I remember the meeting adjustments. On one of the slides, previous slides, the key adjustments, I think it said? It says mill tax $5,000. Is that estimated $5,000 extra revenue that we're anticipating for the mill tax by around the same?
Mr. Steel.
Yes, estimated rural community tax, we're giving you an hour.
Further questions in discussion? Okay. We already took a vote on the first motion on this article, the second motion is to the $7,947,959 that is to raise and appropriate the debt service. This does require a two-thirds vote as of debt service, that's why we wrote it out in the prior debate. Seeing over discussion, all those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. May I? Article 16. Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate amounts to purchase items of a capital nature as specified in article 16, as printed in the law and recommended by the capital improvement planning committee, with the following change, $62,000 for NPDES stormwater compliance funded as follows, raise and appropriate $11,837, and $50,163 from capital improvement stabilization. And furthermore, in all instances where bond is listed as the source of funds, said borrowing will be pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, paragraph 9, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow said specified sums and issue bonds and notes therefore, and further than any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, unless any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
The recommendation of the Board of Selectmen.
What does the Board of Selectmen recommend?
For the final submitted, Mr. Keller.
The final submitted, where it goes.
Further discussion. I'm sorry, for the school committee, Mr. Webster.
School committee, 4017.
Mr. McGrath.
Ed McGrath, eat more road. Was a time at town meeting when various department heads had to come up and explain the request for these items. We're spending $110,000 for the fire department, my quick math. The police station is how old and needs plumbing repairs? Can we get some background on this list, please, thank you.
Mr. Bailey.
I guess to answer the first part of that, each department does come before the Board of Selectmen with a presentation, and that goes on for several meetings where they're explaining the need for these. And then I think, I think if you heard earlier from Mr. Keller, and you might want to come to the mic as well and speak towards that question, there's a number of these projects that are vetted over a series of meetings and from the different boards and commissions with respect to what the need is and they're slated and queued to be considered. But we do hear as a board, each department's presentation during our annual budget meetings involve seven meetings.
Mrs. Keller.
It's actually part of the process, the...
Can I move the microphone off?
Part of the process of the capital improvement planning committee is to have a presentation for our committee, for each of the departments on their requested capital improvements for the year. As I said earlier, we will, if it's something that is needed to be replaced, we'll actually look at what they're replacing, power or truck, or something like that, or if the building is needed, we're often will go and look at those, see what the issues, so all of these are wholly vetted by the full committees, 89 member committee, and most members are there for every meeting, and then each of the members of the committee separately scores the requests that accompany for us. So we can aggregate that score, that's all we want of our recommendation. I'd be happy to go through any of these, or all of these, if you would want to hear them.
Mr. McGrath.
Ed McGrath, eat more road. I have no way discounting the hard work that the committees do. I find a committee myself, I get it, we're coming to town meeting for the final approval, and we go through these budgets, we're spending millions of dollars, we spend more time considering a $280,000 snow bill from two years ago. All I'm looking for is what's going on with the police station and the plumbing. Do you want to go over the overall voting on that?
Happy.
Mr. Keller.
Happy to go through that. Specifically, in the police station, it's bombing, worth, needs to be upgraded, there is a leak in a water heater that needs to be replaced. The building is relatively new, the town police station is defined in life, and so you have to stay with it, if you do want to, and we can hear a replacement if necessary. These aren't huge items, they need to be kept maintained, so we have that in the police station and in the libraries, the plumbing repairs, we can be on the libraries as well. The other items, we need to, the big ones, the fire department, the communications is required, we need to operate the communication system. Horizon is changing, there's sport for the kind of communication we currently have, the copper cable, it's no longer going to be supported, we needed to add a couple of more stations to record it, so that when the fire, particularly the firemen, in the fields, they can communicate back with the fire station. This is an operator that it's really a safety issue, and we thought this would be done to today's topic, we've been working on this year, and need additional meetings next year, and the way the horizon is moving on, very, very, very interesting, we may need to get this super out. The road program, which is kind of big, I won't small, so you want the road program, start early, there's $50,000 remaining to the town from chapter 9 money, this is a supplement of that, and $300,000, having this money available on a regular, dependable basis allows DPDW to start up the road year early in the spring, and not have to wait until town meeting, the whole time the road is issued. So that, and we would see every year, if our, we get all that road need to be maintained. The elementary wireless, this was quite a accomplishment, by the school, particularly my company, the Adder Valley, this is what, the wires, the free wires to all three elementary schools, we're getting a lot of participation, this is about $390,000, and we're getting $407,000, probably getting another $40,000 refund, but this is all next year, so it's a good deal, we're getting this all pretty, pretty short, and it's a lot of hard work for the school to get those brands. About, so, you know, when we were doing the budget, we didn't know how much stuff was going across, the estimate was around $600,000, $200,000 free cash, and the committee recommended, who are we going to loan, $200,000 supplement, $400,000 free cash. Replace an engine, this is a 25-year-old engine that has, at the end of its useful life, takes a little over a year to rebuild one, so we're requesting a renovation for now, we won't be delivered for more than a year from now, but you had to convince us to do that. The meter replacement, a couple of years ago, this town meeting awarded $1.47 million to replace all the water units in town, with the system of that would report directly back to town, all the usage of everyone's home, so you wouldn't have to have meter readers all around, the metering is going to be done on a real-time basis, also gives us the ability to find water issues and a location that leads to something that somebody's going to vacation, for the house to flood, and we'll be able to notify somebody that's important on what are being used. This is terms of $7,007, now isn't sufficient amount of money to do the project, or you know, $250,000. The good news is that the, this will actually be paid for, the debt services will actually be paid for out of the savings that will be in metering all the water. As meters get older, they're less reliable, and the percentage of water that's going through is captured, we need to, as they say, the additional revenue that we will collect will be sufficient to deal with the debt services. The others are, all of them, there are questions, I have to take them.
Mr. Steel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, a lot of what I was just describing, I don't want to say I didn't see the things.
And so, as I said, a lot of hard work required of the school lab to get those brands. About, so you know, when we were doing the budget, we didn't know how much stuff was going across, the estimate was around six hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars free cash, and the committee recommended, who are we going to loan, two hundred thousand dollars, supplement of four hundred thousand dollars free cash. Replace an engine, this is a twenty-five-year-old engine that has, at the end of its useful life, takes a little over a year to build one, so we're requesting renovation for now, we won't be delivered for more than a year from now, but you had to convince us to do that. The meter replacement, a couple of years ago, this town meeting awarded one point four seven million dollars to replace all of the water we need to town, with the system of that would report correctly back to town, all the usage of everyone's home, so you would not have to have meter readers all around, or metering is going to be done on a real-time basis, also gives us the ability to find water issues and a location that leads to something that somebody's going to vacation, for the house to flood, and you would be able to notify somebody that's important, or whatever you need. This is terms of million seven, now isn't sufficient amount of money to do the project, or you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The good news is that this will actually be paid for, the debt service system is actually being paid for out of the savings that will be in metering all the water. As meters get older, they're less reliable, and the percentage of water that's going through is captured, we need to, as they say, the additional revenue that we will collect will be sufficient to deal with the debt services. The others are relative, so I'll have to approach these, I have to take them.
Mr. Eel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, a lot of what I was just describing, I don't want to say I didn't see the meetings, much detail has gone over and presented by each department as to their needs for the year and possible issues that they have. I can only say to everybody here that if you need more in the details of how things work, attending meetings like that would be beneficial to you, so that you wouldn't have to go through a lot of dissertation of what's going on at these meetings. So attending the meetings, those have a great value to all the citizens. Also, the question that I do have is going to the makeup of the list, which I anticipated, but I'd like it is going to town meeting how the two hundred thousand dollars for the electric facilities landed on the list for the CIB city. If I recall correctly, initially it was not on the list, and it was later added to the list, and secondary thing, so that would be my first question. The other question I have is, and I'm off this list, not only that it's going to display something else, and I see two items that I recall that would have possibly made this, which would mean sixty thousand dollars for the initial module, and then forty thousand dollars for the school gym floor, people and all the members that had different choices. My question there is, what could make this in lieu of the two hundred thousand dollars for the school to have this kind of thing? Thank you.
Mr. Keller.
First of all, the two hundred thousand dollars, that's very good, the estimate after last town meeting was that prices being called six hundred thousand dollars, originally six hundred and fifty, fifty was appropriated at last town meeting to do all of the architectural work to get metering drawings done, so that was spent by last town meeting. So the estimate was six hundred thousand dollars for bathrooms, it was only four hundred thousand dollars available in free cash, so the other two hundred thousand dollars was just a capital budget, and that was just proposed. I would be. Your other question on what could have happened? We saw three point three million dollars in requests from the municipal and school departments last year, and we recommended two point two million of that, two point one seven seven of the costs. The items that you mentioned for the demolition of the modular schools at Forte, and the chief for the little school, those were not requests for the fiscal eighteen, they are on the fiscal nineteen requests. What was on the fiscal eighteen, the request that we didn't do, that we didn't have money to do, was all three hundred thousand dollars to replace the flares on the library, replacing a vehicle the fire department were about forty-five thousand dollars, forty-four thousand dollars, buying a vehicle with a tool cap to be used for plumbing some other areas, and seven thousand dollars to replace the parts and repair it. That was a budget item that we own million two, there, hopefully didn't lose some brand money, the brand money is there now, so we didn't deal with that, which is probably what we're going to have for the next year or two years. So I guess the biggest item there that we didn't deal with, that was all the two hundred thousand dollars, limited in the exact way that we need to apply the two hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Eel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I guess, as a side note, as a suggestion, going forward, that we have the description that we have in the statement, perhaps you can add a little amendment to your description of one line or two line explaining, I'm sorry, one line or two lines explaining what you just went through, without having to do that, it just happened as a tag to the town board, and everyone can read that, and ask my, I give that fish. Thank you.
Sir.
We have a big vote, twelve freedom tonight, that is where everyone here, there are five items up here that say appropriate, a raise, excuse me, and I was just wondering if someone could explain to me what the function is, how is it that we raise money? I understand appropriate is easy enough, but what is the function, or how we go about raising money, and it comes to just about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
Mr. Eel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the category, the items that are identified as raising, they are funded by virtue of being raised through the property tax level. The town has a total property tax level that it can raise on a annual basis, for particular fiscal year, and we establish our financial plan for the year with the financial planning team. Fortune those funds are dedicated to the operating budget, which was approved in the previous budget, which is more arguable, and a fortune is dedicated to capital planning of the amount a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which the committee, after we read this request, allocates money depending on the cost of the individual, whether the borrowers require or not the allocation for taxes, and we look at that and we do.
Mrs. Bailey.
Hi, Sealy. I just have a procedural question. Why is the two hundred thousand dollar bond for the bathroom facilities included in this Article sixteen rather than part of the overall funding package for the bathroom and door concessions under Article seventeen? Seems that we haven't approved our settlement yet, or we're going to bother with Article sixteen. Thank you.
Mr. Eel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. When we receive process estimates initially involving the reliance through the course of winter, we began with this number in the client, that had a projected cost of approximately six hundred thousand dollars for construction. That in October, as we were looking to allocate certified free cash at our October town meeting, we dedicated four hundred thousand dollars for the free cash that was available at the end of last fiscal year towards this project, because of the compliance nature. When we got the cost estimates, the additional two hundred thousand dollars was incurred in capital, which we were planning to be allocated at our, the allocation funding, which is why it shows up in this particular article.
Further discussion. I see that the test required a two-thirds vote as some of the funding was disallowed to the state of the nation. All of the people, please say aye.
Aye.
Both?
No.
I declare a third. Article seventeen is ending now.
Mr. Moderator, I believe that four hundred and thirty thousand is appropriated from free cash, and fifty thousand is appropriated from overlay surplus for the construction of restaurants and the concession stand at the Arthur J. Kenny Field, including any costs incidental or related thereto, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project as specified in Article seventeen as printed in the warrant.
Record mediation from the Board of Selectmen, Mrs. Bailey.
Board of Selectmen, recommend.
Final committee, Mr. Webber.
Please, to me after a lengthy session, and as you know, many months of meetings, the three favor, the five opposed to the second.
Mr. Webber, the school committee.
Could you recommend four zero with one accent?
Discussion. Pre-standards, we've been there five minutes? Okay. We have a pre-standards for the school committee. Mr. Webber.
I've heard. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a quick refresh on the athletic facilities committee, it was more about fifteen months ago that our first project, we tried with the western all-purpose field and softball field at the high school, middle school complex. If you had a chance to see those fields, they're gorgeous, and softball team has finished their season there. We raised a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project, and did not ask for one second of the time. So that project is completed, there are donations, mostly to our youth sports groups, generous citizens and businesses. At that time, Mr. Webber, when you referred the restroom slash concessions stand project, which was one of the options we looked at. Quick history, when the school, the whole high school was torn down, and we were required to add bathrooms to deter the young boys' state, because we no longer had restroom within three hundred feet of the facility. We currently have a waiver, and it's one of the showing, we're on a restory completing up restrooms, we can continue to use the field as supportive bodies. Initially, the state required us to have twenty-six stalls and urinals, through a lot of hard work, through town officials, state representatives, we now have it down to ten, five women's stalls, three men's stalls, two girls', so we saved a significant amount of money by reducing the number of facilities required. The concession stand needs to be replaced, the building's on the disuse list, it's an old wooden building, it's falling down, and that's where the restroom's going to be built anyway, so the concession stand has to come down. We hired CDI Consulting, and they made several proposals to us. We went out to bid April, there was, the bid had three parts, there was a base bid for the restrooms only, second, there was a base bid plus had utility connections for a future concession stand, and the third option was restroom and concession stand complete package in one project. We went out to bid, we received one bid, it was deemed unacceptable, it was too high, it was approximately, it was well over a nine hundred thousand for the entire project, and it was six hundred and eighty-two or eighty-four thousand for the restrooms only. At that time, we decided to go out to bid again, we did a couple of things, we extended the bid process, we gave companies three weeks to bid instead of two, and we extended the completion date for the project out to March of next year. Initially, we asked for completion by August of this year, and we were back from many companies, but there was no way they could get it done in that timeframe. So this time, we went out, we want to get that, do you have a drawing, do you have a drawing? To see right here, the restrooms, the concession stand would be where the line portion is, and then the restrooms, this is the, this is the very drawing of the restroom. The restroom is now a square or rectangular building, and the concession stand connects to the restroom at the end, where you can see those lines. If you kind of take it off to end of, I think that would be the women's room, the session acts, the restroom is now a rectangle. So we got three bids this time around, and we ended up finding that we were shot at the price. And it will allow us, and on June second, the athletic facilities committee met, and the industry recommended to recommend town meeting to a project of six hundred and eighty thousand dollars to construct both the restrooms and the concession stand in one project. The six hundred and eighty thousand dollars is less than the bathroom cost only for every other bid, for every other bid that we got. So that's the recognition we made to Selectmen, Finance Committee, and the School Committee. I think it's already been discussed how we pay for one hundred and thirty thousand from free cash, the two hundred thousand from borrowing that was previously approved in Article sixteen, and fifty thousand dollars for the overlay surplus. At this time, we have no schedule for construction, but as I said, the deadline for completion is March fifteenth of two thousand eighteen. Site work for the project is scheduled to be completed by December first, so they can go in, dig, plumbing, electrical, whatever else they need to do at that time.
Ed Morrow, twenty-nine, I'm Ed Morrow, ready. I'm speaking as a member of the Recreation Committee, and I also serve on the Athletic Facilities Committee, which is presenting the concession stand project tonight. Seventeen years ago, Marty Tilton, Dave Johnson, the Athletic Director, and myself were on the turf committee, and the reason I give that fact is twofold. At that time, the committee was started in two thousand seven investigating the turf fields, track facilities, and what had to go along with comprehensive proposal to the town, admission stating presented to the town, proposed complex such as this. At that time, it was a track field, practice field with irrigation, bleachers, press box, elevated team rooms, bathrooms, concession stands, security areas, fencing, traffic flow, open area for patrons to congregate, an education area that symbolizes Douglas, and also serves as an entrance for the facility, the ticket takers within the fencing area. All those things were recommended that we studied that should be done to make it a complete facility. At that time, we had everything, because the bathrooms and team rooms were within the required distance of the old school. Once the school was built, as I explained, the school moved, we're out of appliance and needed to put the bathrooms in, and the team room was completed by the school building committee, so the concession stand was always there. We want to let you know that this facility, as you see it today, less the bathrooms, there's everything we presented to the town, the town meeting members, Selectmen, School Committee, Finance Committee, and all members that were at their two thousand nine meeting, and nothing has changed. The reason I'm going into this over the past five or six months, we've had debate back and forth with different groups, vote is really needed or not needed. Like anything else, time rolls on, committee members change, town officials change, school administration, strength administration has changed, presidential elections, town and government change since two thousand seven. The only thing that's stayed the same is some members of the committees stayed with the school committee that were around from two thousand seven to now, finance, recreation, athletic subcommittee, and some select. So very possible you could be here, never were the two thousand nine, and are asking why are they asking for this money? Since two thousand nine to now, we have some new slogans, the fake press, you're a right winger or a left winger, I happen to be the right wing, and if you don't trust us, you don't understand that with the way the crazy politics have been the past year and a half, it's the crooked press, the liar, and the manipulated truth. And we have new health regulations, and we have new volunteers that serve, and even new committees. So many well-respected town voters and people in town that are well-respected, may not know who, what to believe. For that reason, because I do value my word and realize I'm getting older, and I have to worry about what I remember or not, so I have to try to appear to trust you, to you. I have twenty-three slides that I can make a presentation after I'm done with my statement. If you want to see the slides, it will show you that we made this presentation in two thousand nine, I have them. If not, if you're happy with my words, then you can go from there. I have talked about all the topics that you need for proper facilities and layouts and amenities. Second, since two thousand nine, some other important things have happened, and now is the need versus the want thing theory, and that's very important in town politics, it's in front of our book that we get every year for the town meetings. The high school, middle school, athletic facilities committee reached out to recreational needs and communities through various funds. As Al said, we raised a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Had we known that there was going to be a chance that the concession stand needed to be built, we could have taken that money and not completed the things the school needed. But the leads, the very good community members came forward with that money, Mr. Webster and very other good. Uh, Mr. Webster and very other good boosters and people in town donated money to finish that. Thus, we didn't have that money to put towards the concession stand because we had it at the time. The reason this is important is to show you that the amount of money that is raised from the music boosters and from the concession stand and a lot of the tournaments and things we have, you have to have a concession stand. The music boosters, football, lacrosse, soccer, track team cheerleaders, friends and hoxes that sponsor the block Friday all tournaments. Many alumni that are on those committees in real life for life raised an average of twenty-five thousand dollars every year. With that money, it always goes back to everything, whether it's the league, whether it's the school, and pays for things that aren't paid for out of the budgets. If they didn't raise that money, you would see that the school would have to raise money for uniforms, equipment, transportation, music programs, enrichment trips, storage, uh, equipment, scholarships, band camps, music trips, team, solidarity, safety plans, maintenance on the fields as needed. Many of these groups also participate, they give new funds towards the community for the April festival, Memorial Day parade, graduation, and some of the monies that they raised rose towards those events. So obviously, all the community boosters give the money back to the town. Whatever they raise goes back to the town program. Now, it's possible to look at a need versus want and to also say that everyone in town who may not use the concession stand are of a step foot in this high school facility. I suppose that's true, but they can't use it if they want to. Anyone in town, in a league game, you can take a league game or a high school game, go to March at the end of it, um, and take pride in it. They may choose not to do that, but it's available for you. Something I'm very thankful for, and it's one thing that the relay this year, the volunteers in the concession stand at the real life life, they raised fifteen hundred dollars. That might not sound like a lot of money to anybody when you really think of it, but with the amount of student involved, it is, it's really not about the money. The real life for life in Athrading came here fourteen years ago and it's raised a million dollars. And if anybody wants to think that that money, that money from the real life for life, because finance can look at it also, this like and think, well, the money that's raised to real life for life doesn't really go back to the town. And I guess that I make a difference a little bit. Sometimes you can't put a value on things. Because of real life for life, it was in Athrading, first year my family and I walked. It was because of the beloved school committee woman Janet O'Neill. She was a cancer survivor for a while, and then she lost her fight. At that time, it pretty disturbed all of us and we decided to go first walk we ever did. And that night when we saw those signs that said, "Take a memory of your birthday, do this, do that," pro after screenings. I can remember the guy that hold, you know, to my heart, I'll go up to Janet and say, "You know what? I promise you, I'm gonna do something for you Janet, I'm gonna do something for cancer, I'm gonna do something for, uh, for the people that we know." And every year I used to send out notes on my birthday and making sure that I had my screening. And making sure that people know the birthday, that's one thing you can do for people for the real life for life.
And... I apologize, but we do have to wait until then.
Anyway, that was the year that, you know, I noticed that I was attacked with cancer. Everything was fine, fast moving, but, fast growing, but you know what? It stopped. With the thousand dollars raised, sometimes you look at, does the concession stand do anything for you? Yes, if you didn't have a concession stand, they wouldn't have been here. So sometimes you kind of can't put a life at the price of things other than the money that's raised. So based on that, and the need versus want, I think there's a launch of the concession stand. Needs to make the, needs to make the facility whole again. If you take it away, you have to put something back in there. So I'd like to thank the members of finance, the school committee, whether you agree with us or not. And sometimes if you don't agree with us, I know it always makes me stronger because I try to matter with what we are, how and when to explain everything. Sometimes that's why I talk a little longer, is just Vanessa says, "I talk too long." Sometimes I have to do it because he doesn't listen for a second or third time. So I'd like to thank the people that disagree with us. And if it seemed pretty long, it's because I'm passionate about the concession stand, not because of the money that is raised just from the boosters, because of the amount of community and everything else that goes along with it. Sometimes things are dollars and cents. Thank you.
Further discussion. Mr. Cal.
I'm one of the members of the finance committee of the AICs. Well, I think it'd be nice to have snack art, add to the various other field, and we might as well edit it. My message to it is that it's a capital project that is easily brought ahead of other items that are on the list for the future, we've already been doing, or for next year, Europe. The cost of the bathrooms only, it can get five hundred eighty thousand dollars. Well, it was six hundred dollars of all of us that we set aside to do it. And I think that's perfectly comfortable in going that far. I just don't think that this project is something we would want to do. I've just had a personal opinion and speaking for myself about the time.
Thank you. Mr. E.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Few things. First of all, we actually should not be here at this time having this discussion. Some time ago, we were in the school. This should be part of the conversation. It was not, but it should have been. And we wouldn't be here if the school committee had allowed the structure attached to the current hospital facility that's already standing. I believe that it would have been much lower cost, as I explained in the last town meeting. Um, the, I also mentioned at the last town meeting, the question, we're gonna go with John Calhoun saying, the finance committee and the CIPC. Is it necessary? And the answer is, it's not necessary. It's a wonderful thing to have, but it's not necessary. The other issue was that this site selection for the bathroom was conveniently placed with snack shack currently is. Therefore, creating a situation that made people worry that they're gonna lose a snack shack because the new bathroom is going to replace that snack shack. I can't say that it was done intentionally, attractually, that's, that's what happened. The other issues can be far. John Calhoun, at the last athletic facilities meeting, went through myriad of things that, that projects that CIPC could have taken care of that have great portals, and that would have great portals even down the road. But the cost for the bathrooms had interfered with those projects that they selected. At the last town meeting, I noted that this was a foot-in-the-door type proposal. Yes, it is. It's moving its way through. It's moving its way through from a good idea of attaching it to the locker rooms. And then we decided that it was going to be placed with a snack shack. And now we are here. And I don't believe we should, we should be here at this time. There's just too many costs and it takes away, I know Rita was talking about fundraising and so on. The community sometimes has to also come up with issues that are not really capital expenditures, such as the snack shack. Government doesn't design and build snack shacks. It's designed to go into the storage tank. That's the responsibility, the fundamental responsibility of the town government. Snack shack is something that has, and all snack shacks around town have been raised through fundraising. And they're built through fundraising, never through taxation. And being at the meeting, at the athletic facilities meeting, the last meeting that I attended, I lived around the room. I looked, I look around this room. And I can, I can look through a list of people here, that they are building as generous as they, as they, as they can be. They can raise, I mean, cover the cost for the snack shack, which is only a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And another was, the snack shack, that's a small, that's a small number that people could raise and, and build a snack shack. And all the snack shack that you have, you're gonna be able to fix that to satisfy the needs of the, of the football field. So again, it shouldn't be even the first place. It shouldn't be taken care of in the building schools. And school committee had a chance to go back to the community by simply saying, "Okay, let's put it up to the facilities that's already established." So we don't have to add any more tax burden to the community. That's my thought on that. And I propose that we go to this argument again.
Mr. Tom.
This is the, this is the new Jack. Ken Tom, fourteen fifty Street. First off, we are here and we vote this down, we'll be back here again at some point. Second. Second, I heard earlier, it was said that, and I had to put it down, I agree with it, but we're putting in new wire meters because the old wire meters won't register enough. Well, you know, if we spend the money on a concession stand so that all of these volunteer groups have the opportunity to raise money, it takes those groups from coming to town meeting and saying, "Can you pay for this for us? Can you pay for that?" We have people in town who are willing to volunteer, put in work to raise money for their special interests, for their groups, and instead of coming and saying, "Hey, what can the town do for us?" So paying for this concession stand now is just gonna take financial burden off of the town later. So I think that we should just pass this and then pay for itself in a very short time.
Captain Ward, at the back.
Captain Ward, I told you this, Harrison, right? Um, just, it's hindsight. You know, we voted for the schools, we should have all of them, and with a mind to come about bathrooms that we should have had at the stadium. Unfortunately, the people sitting in this room, apparently, it was an oversight. But we need these bathrooms as state law, we have to have them. And if we're doing the bathrooms, the concession stands, one of these nonprofit groups and these different groups to burn money and to support themselves, I think we have to do it.
Mr. Webster.
I just want to clear up a few things. In terms of the location, excuse me, the engineering company made two recommendations for the location. And where we're putting the restroom was the number one location in terms of where they recommended that it made the most sense. Uh, number two, in terms of retrofitting the team room, that was loaded. We never, there was never any engineering, there was never any planning, there was no architectural work done. We had no idea how much that would cost. In the initial phase, it was somewhere around four twenty-five to four forty-five. We never went any further on that. The school committee has voted unanimously twice to not do that because we don't believe that you take a two-row building and go in and tear it up and put something in there that wasn't meant for it in the first place. I guess the last thing I wanted to mention was, this is a five-hundred-eight-thousand-dollar project if you build the bathrooms on. It's six hundred eighty thousand if you add the concession stand, that's the total. Hundred seventy-two thousand dollars. It's an opportunity that is basically slapping us in the face here. We don't do it now, if you want to come back in two or three years, you're gonna have a hard time getting a contractor to bid on a project that'll probably be two hundred fifty or three hundred thousand. But I don't think it's big enough to interest many groups or many companies. And finally, in terms of volunteer, as I mentioned, this committee raised a hundred fifty thousand dollars to complete the softball and all-purpose field. There's a little bit of charity fatigue among many of the youth groups. The youth groups went in close to a hundred thousand dollars with that hundred fifty thousand. And I don't think in their conscience, I could go back to them and ask them for more. So I think, I think this is a worthwhile project. It's a hundred seventy-two thousand dollars that we're putting out here, and I recommend that we pass it.
Mr. Cal.
Ed and Ruthie Moore, Rose. I am fully supportive of this audit. We spent three years, three football seasons, running the concession stand for the music boosters. And hawking hot chocolate in the stands. And one year was able to raise, we probably netted three, thirty-five hundred dollars. It's a big sum of money. This money goes back into the programs, whether it's the music or whatever, it goes back to the programs. And I'll speak for music, instruments, uniforms, transportation. This is an investment. If you're gonna get, unless you, if you're gonna vote against this, or you wanna tell me that you're gonna get this building built for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the future, I wanna know what construction company you plan on using, because I don't want Joe Bagby though, it's gonna affect our building. In this town, we've always been shortsighted. We end up paying more in the long run. We've been here for twenty-five years, not a town yet, but I think we need, this is a prudent expenditure of the money, get it done. It's gonna be an investment, and in town, we'll get that hundred and seventy thousand dollars back in a short time.
Mr. Ollery, still. Mr. Ollery.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I stand before you as a member of the selectmen, but also as a member of the athletic facilities subcommittee, which have worked with the town. And just a couple of facts that I wanted to clear up. Information was presented to you. First of all, this particular facility, although it's a facility of design oversight in relation to the school project, it was not gonna be reversible by the state, it didn't qualify. Not all of us have projects, so if you lose something, whether it's a stadium, although it's on the case, a little bit of an initial loss, no more reverses. It wasn't an oversight. It was not a rule of the project, potentially, because it's not used to be reversible. If you're aware of the location again, yes, again, I was advocating that we get a different location, but as we walk through the process, we look at it, listening to the administration, I'll say, they elevate the traffic a little bit, based on certain facts. It makes it possible to place it with the current concession stand is. So if you know you're involved with this concession stand, you're gonna do this project. I can't believe that you're gonna have. The first is, we're gonna have a concession stand. It's a byproduct of the beginning. And the second is, we're going to have to put in a concession stand at some point, somehow. And there's gonna be some private fundraising again. And there's just a question pointed out, so I'll look at it. Just recently, the last six, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was raised that we're gonna get for the roof to the roof, some of these organizations that would use this concession stand. To take care of the irrigation, the side of the softball field, the softball field, which is currently being reused. We would have had no use for those fields this past season at all, for these people to sit in it for. It's not very often that we do come before you and ask for funds to, funds for things. Maybe look at like an ancillary facility. If you look at it, it's tarred, it's just, it's mallet, those people. Everybody gets hundreds of thousands of dollars. If you look at just a remark, not one tax million dollars a cent. But then the dollar, if you purchase one dollar for that. People like this, putting in decades of service to raise money, giving the quality of life in Athrading. Where it is today, which is terrific, that's delivering children. Now, this one thing here, it's an opportunity. Again, I was not necessarily advocating. And I want to remember the athletic... I want to remember the athletic facility subcommittee, and this is being directed at the place that it did, every single one of us was ready to say no. One that this one bid came in was, got us within reach of the money that's going to be allocated for this particular project, including the concession stand, within fifty-thousand dollars, we reached to get all of that at once, to complete this complex. Everything that is under here, I have with the school, the school, the field, you're going to have bathrooms, we have supplies, we have to save this little floor, the only thing that's seen by our board is just putting in the concession stand. We need it to be lived now, if we don't do it now, it's impossible, and we're going to be hitting up the same people or other people, trying to get something done at an additional cost, more money, and we may not have the same ball. So, well, I think, this is a priority, the fall of the committee, we have a group of committee members, would I have this as a priority, and leave it to anything else? As a pre-Canadian project? No, but in combination with having to get the compliance with standard regulation, we will, if it can, have the, 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 which should take away a lot of resources, I would rather do all to overpay the resources.
Maybe?
Preston Parrott, Sixteenth Peter Road. So I've helped run softball over the past ten years in town, and you're walking across with a new leader. I know, thinking about this concession standard, you know, feels brand-new. I know I personally was like, "Oh, a concession stand for a softball field," you know, it doesn't make a big impact, but when you really think about it, and think about all the new fields that are down there, and the amount of kids, and, you know, attendees to games, you have eight potential teams down there at one time, that's a huge part of this town. And it's an experience to have a concession stand, not to mention the community service opportunities for the kids in school, and a way for them to give back to the town programs that they grew up. I think it's, it would be something to find, to root in. Sorry?
Propose that they move for all of the questions. Move for the question. All those who are ready to move for the question?
Aye.
Hold.
No.
We're going to, we have a few questions, just a minute. All those who are there, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Article eighteen, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the unissued balances of the borrowing authorizations described below, which amounts are no longer needed to pay costs of completed projects which they were originally approved, are hereby rescinded and of no further force or effect. Town meeting date March nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, the middle, the middle high school construction, the amount to be rescinded, thirty million, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-and-ninety dollars. Town meeting October eighth, two thousand and fifteen, the little school roof, the amount to be rescinded, six-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, as specified in Article eighteen, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
The board of selectmen recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. O'Leary. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those who are there, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. And then, Article nineteen, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of thirty million, excuse me, thirty-thousand-eighty-nine dollars.
That's a little bad.
Strike that. Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of thirty thousand, eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents, as the premium paid to the town upon the sale of banzo notes issued for the high school, middle school construction project, which is the subject of a proposition two-and-a-half debt exclusion. To pay for the cost of this project being financed by such banzo notes, and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such project, could not be issued by the town by the same amount as specified in Article nineteen of the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of selectmen recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. O'Leary.
Finance committee, you understand, Mr. O'Leary.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those who are there, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. And then, Article twenty, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to brief and appropriate the sum of two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars for the purpose of funding the FY two thousand and eighteen retirement obligations with town employees as specified in Article twenty, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of selectmen unanimously recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. O'Leary.
Finance committee, you understand, Mr. O'Leary.
Further discussion. Mr. O'Leary.
This amount covers both town and school employees that have specified, and we anticipate retiring in this fiscal year, and these benefits that would be owed to them upon retirement.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those who are there, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. And then, Article twenty-one, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of three-hundred-thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the other post-employment benefit liability. Trescon, established under Article thirty-six of June third, two thousand and thirteen, town meeting, as specified in Article twenty-one, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of selectmen unanimously recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. O'Leary.
Finance committee, you understand, Mr. O'Leary.
Further discussion. Mr. O'Leary.
President, if you've heard the tremendous expenditure of the town, and towns surrounding us, oh, as a result of paying for retired health insurance, the board of selectmen a few years ago took the path of saying, "Let's stop the bleeding, and what we will do is, we will start to fund for every employee we hire, the mom's money sets that may retire, there will be funds available to pay for retirement, rather than paying the health insurance of retirees out of the town budget every year."
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those who are there, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. And then, Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass Article twenty-two, as printed in the warrant.
For the board of selectmen, Mr. Tresco.
Board of selectmen recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. O'Leary.
Finance committee, you understand, Mr. O'Leary.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those who are there, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. And then, Article twenty-three, Mr. Tresco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash to some eight-hundred thousand to fund the community development master plan, including any costs considered or related in it too, as specified in Article twenty-three, as printed in the warrant.
For the board of selectmen, Mr. Tresco.
Board of selectmen recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. O'Leary.
Finance committee, you understand, Mr. O'Leary.
Does the duty of any information, which you may recommend is on the side?
CVC recommends.
Further discussion. Mr. Tresco.
So as you can see, this slide behind me, it's been since two thousand and four, since we updated our master plan for town, this obviously is our roadmap for future planning and the development of town, it's very important, and I hope you give your support and role in favor of it.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those who are there, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. And then, Article twenty-four, Mr. Tresco.
Mr. Moderator, I move that town vote pursuant to the revision of the general law, C forty-four, eighty-three and a half, as most recently amended to, one, establish and or reestablish revolving funds for this year, two thousand and eighteen, two, establish this year's vending limits, and, three, amend the code, non-reading town bylaw, by adding new chapter sixty-six findings, Article one revolving funds, sixty-six dash one, establishment of revolving accounts, all as set forth in the warrant, Article under Article twenty-four.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Tresco.
Board of selectmen recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. O'Leary.
Finance committee, you understand, Mr. O'Leary.
Seeing none, all those who are there, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. And then, Article twenty-five, Mr. Tresco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the code, non-reading general bylaw, by adding new chapter nine standards for operation of unmanned aircraft systems, and to amend the list of fines under chapter one, general provisions one dash five E dot three, violations and penalties, which we include those specified under chapter nine, all specified in Article
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Tresco.
Board of selectmen recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. O'Leary.
Finance committee, you understand, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Diller, please say, John, if it's, if it's always in the five minutes.
This is the background of the Act of Eighteen, regulations to use in operation of an aircraft system that currently known as drones, may be considered a super restriction over the areas of use. There are not currently any safeguards regarding this in our use. Federal law stating regulations does exist, involves case law, temporary, commercial regulations, and use of drones, or something, continues to evolve, and this is clearly a technology. This article proposes to establish a bylaw to protect citizens from invasion of privacy, potential trespasses, and address safety issues because of the inherent drone operations that are not otherwise addressed under federal law. Some, some of this is a law, person is authorized by federal law to operate an unmanned aircraft system, may do so, and you will create a very lawful course if the unmanned aircraft system is operated in an aircraft system under federal law. Intended to violate the law, it is driving to potential misuse of drones, to get them on, by, by federal law. The bylaw will offer following provisions. First, shall not operate an unmanned aircraft system in the manner that knowingly and intentionally interfered with any public safety official who was performing an emergency duties. Shall not operate drone, chances of safe practices, so as to endanger life or property of another. Shall not operate drone, if there was more presence rather than their own, would be two to fifty persons or present rather than their own, would be violation of restraining order. No person shall knowingly and intentionally operate a drone to capture or activate audio recordings of an individual in the manner that it behaves in individuals' reasonable expectation of privacy, and if their own was to be individualized, designed, completely operated, and accepted during the operating, at least twenty-five E from individuals.
That was two minutes. That was a little sidebar. It was a little, all right. I'll let you know from town.
Going to go up to the, in the blue shirt. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for coming to the street, to Satan Street. I'm also the co-founder of a drone services company that exists solely to provide industry-based drone solutions for handserviced engineering, jettisoned, for municipal clients, private clients. The drone industry is huge, it's about a twenty-billion-dollar industry worldwide, and there's five years of so, it's projected to be. I get really concerned when I see regulations like this here and in other towns. We are heavily, heavily regulated by the FAA. The FAA controls the airspace, they tell us where we can fly, when we can fly, pilots all have to certify. I question, almost question the town's authority to regulate the airspace of our, that's the town, because of only air. I also get concerned, my own operations, on how we can successfully operate, given the regulations we have, and how I have the balances for the town. I fully respect everyone's need for privacy, but this, this to me, is kind of going down a path of more trouble than what's worth, overburdening our police, trying to chase us down for a general breach of law.
In the eye.
Dr. Danny Paul, you're on the front.
I have a hold of the microphone up.
Dr. Danny Paul, you're on the front. I own drone, I don't, I'm not associated with drones. My concern is with this bill in the first place. The federal court has, as of May twenty-seventeen, with law in the FAA's requirement, that anybody can be, that a private owner has to be registered for, to operate a drone in the United States. So therefore, my concern is that this town is setting itself up for, for a lot of litigation if they threaten any regulation associated with this, unless they're cleared of this data, that is for commercial use only. The FAA, there is no registration for anyone to lawfully operate a drone in a private matter. So my concern there is that this bill, at this point, is overreached by the town, you're
Do you want that?
Thank you very much. I'm perfectly sure, I do agree with you. Unfortunately, with the FAA, there's no enforcement authority that the police department has to enforce, the regulations are in place. So, part of what you're seeing on the screen behind me, other than the one section that says, "No person shall operate a drone in the first of privacy rather than a drone, will be violation of restraining order," all the other prohibitions up there are part of the regulations. Unfortunately, when you call the FAA, or when the president calls the FAA to complain that there's a drone hovering over their backyard or their pool, they're not coming. What this is doing is giving the local police department the authority to enforce a civil fine for the regulations that are already in place by the FAA. In each one. And each one, I just want to make it clear, I am not opposed to drone use. This is an industry that is exploding. There are tremendous uses of this going forward. So you're right, it's involving an industry that we're certainly not going to be regulating the airspace. But the FAA regulates the airspace to protect the aircraft. That's essentially what they're there for. They're not here to protect your yard. They're not here to protect if somebody did have restraining order in fact against an individual and that person did fly a drone near that person. Restraining order would state that they have to be a hundred yards away. Doesn't state that the person in a drone has to be a hundred yards away. I wish the legislature would take some action on that at some point in the future, but unfortunately, it's not the good place. So what we're trying to do today is to respond to our citizens when they needed a complaint about a drone, the misuse of drone, not proper use of drone. So that's why this is, that's why we put this board today.
Mr. Clyde, Town Attorney.
Derek Clyde, I'm going to the moderator. I just wanted to add that if this bylaw passes, we'll have to get approved by the Attorney General. And it's an early discussion with the Attorney General, they're very likely to also seek the approval of the FAA as well as the DOT, the Aeronautical Division. So they're likely descended to those agencies as well to get their approval.
Sir.
Robert Atkinson, Jr., eight, two, Old Street, you're in the ready. Couple of concerns. Well, any regulation is only as good as the bill to enforce it and prove a case in court. And it seems to me only approve violation of statute and photographic evidence. In other words, somebody takes a picture of a drone over their backyard with a cell phone camera or something like this. By the time the police get there, whoever's doing it could be gone. It's kind of like the same principle behind laser pointers, when people point laser pointers at pilots or civil aircraft. By the time somebody finds out that, you know, by the time the pilots report the issue, report to the police and the police respond, the perpetrator's along gone. So I have enforceable concerns. And beyond that, I think if you had to address the state level because of potential hodgepodge of regulations from town to town. I'd like to see a more uniform statute, preferably at the state level, so it covers the entire state. Statute of uniform across town, city, county lines. But again, I'd like the police department to address potential enforcement issues. Thank you.
Chief, I would like to talk.
Mr. Moderator, very similar to if somebody were trespassing with a drone, if they were trespassing on their own as a person, who would go and investigate? The drone issue is similar to a client law, somebody trespassing, you are, it's going to take due diligence on our part to do thorough investigation. I'm not sure how many complaints we won't get out of my job as the police chief, this tall cast, where I see the potential problems. And I see this because of the touring industry and in these particular circumstances, these are very specific violations of people's privacy that I'm trying to address. I'm not trying to regulate the interest of drones, it's way over my bakery. So I don't anticipate that we're going to be having a lot of complaints. But if we do, we want to have the resources available to us to respond to us, since it's our complaint. Because that problem is a real problem, and I understand that there is small position to it. But we're speaking of a three hundred dollar civil line, just to give us some, some authority to enforce. Where the FAA is probably never going to get into it.
Mr. Gill.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm the last person to see asking for government to, to interfere with private practices. However, as I said, I had real concern about drones and the impact that they will have on people's privacy and, however, on people's property. Tremendous concern. Coincidentally, the chief is already working on this, I spoke, so. It's, it's not a matter of not allowing anyone to use a drone. This is a matter of really how they use a drone relative to people's privacy. I think if you go through this history, there are many court cases where people look through fences, the old fences, and watch the, what people are doing in the backyard. And they have been fined or, or sentenced for invasion of privacy. So this is what this is all about, it's about privacy. And I think that any time that we give teeth to a law that protects our privacy, I think it's very, very valuable law and, of course. Thank you.
Sir.
Dr. Penny, I appreciate what, what you were saying here, but that the last line, drone must be visible line of sight and except during daylight, you say twenty-five feet for the individual. This happened, the ridiculous requirement for drone. These things are flying drones at least three hundred feet of anybody. You just go up and they're allowed to do one at three hundred feet, so the limit of twenty-five feet is way over restrictive. And so you're totally not taking the concept of what you're saying, what everyone else is saying here, that we're worried about privacy. You're worried about taking away individual's life operates wrong if you're trying to put a twenty-five foot limit on this thing. That in itself will be an obvious inconvenience. The FAA was offering three hundred feet. This bill was flawed.
Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is, this is to prevent somebody from flying, you know, within twenty-five feet of a person. Very dangerous at that point, and I'm not drone operator, but, you know, you have to be very precise to fly within twenty-five feet. So that's what this is trying to prevent, and this is not preventing it during the offhand, but I would assume that you would want a drone flying within twenty-five feet, so that's the problem. That's what this is addressing. I'm not sure if that's, address your question, but. Did that answer the question? Don't shout out. Go back, sorry.
Yeah, when you say, like, what I say to the individual, I understand what it says. If you look at the average, you know, player, and then it's from Virginia, and you talk about someone operating in his backyard, even on a recreational purpose, they'll be low within that twenty-five feet. Limit, we're talking between one person to the next. So I think, I understand, it's like, nobody blessing other people, like, totally understand that. But there's the, to put a twenty-five foot circle around it, he's not, he's surprised to find it out to bad, so very overly restrictive. Because it's an individual, it doesn't say at what point, anybody, you know, this. You, you, you just, you're just making this overly bound, it's one of the things you, you, I understand the depth of the law, and I'm totally against the people, you know, using a drone, but so long, it's based on privacy. But you, the number that I reported, I think is, the problem there is twenty-five feet. The limit is overly restrictive. I know it says twenty-five feet seem like a bogus business, but we need our small aircraft, our, we can operate from walls with twenty-five feet without any problem. Even twenty-five feet are great.
Chief.
This is sort of another individual, not the operator for a person assisting operator, this is you flying a drone within twenty-five feet of another person. So essentially, you need to be twenty-five feet away from any person. That's essentially what this section of our law is.
Sir.
Matt, thank you, that's twenty-four, Washington Street, you're ready. I have two, basically, questions and concerns. From a legal standpoint, can these violations of restraining order or invading people's privacy, can these be addressed legally through disturbing the peace or some other clauses without having to pass this law? And my other question is, if we're really talking about preserving people's privacy, is that going to have a substantial impact on legitimacy? It's like this gentleman here said, for, for commercial or even personal reasons? If somebody's got a drone going in their backyard to get pictures of a family event, are the neighbors going to complain and say, did you remain with privacy? So I'd like to hear feedback on that.
I mean, yeah.
Mr. Clyde.
Derek Clyde, Town Attorney. I mean, the answer to your question is, the current laws in effect don't address drones. So could the town, the chief, try to enforce the current laws on books for drone use? I mean, you could try, but, you know, they, they're not written in such a way, and obviously, the chief feels that the current laws are not sufficient. And it's not like there's cases on record of people being arrested for invasion of privacy with their drone use. They're all federally regulated, and like the chief said, there are federal laws, but if you call the FAA, they're likely not coming. This is, you know, and I think the slide showed, there, this is, there's not other bylaws that currently exist like this. You know, this is a, a new attempt to bring drone use under some local regulation, ways that it can be prohibited, that can be enforced by the police team. If town meeting passes it, it's going to go with the Attorney General, who's going to have a chance to either approve or disapprove of the bylaw. It's pretty clear to us that the Attorney General is likely going to also send it to the FAA and the Aeronautical Division of the Department of Transportation. So this is a valid attempt at local enforcement. And it's going to get looked at, if it passes here, will it be reviewed as a, for the town to enforce it? And likely is going to be reviewed by the federal government as well, at least the FAA. So I think the answer to your question is, it's hard to say that there's no law, the books that could, that you could use for drone use, but it certainly would be a lawful impact. And it would be very tough to predict, with any confidence that you would sustain in a criminal court, violation of privacy of these drones.
Chief.
I may just address a second of your question.
May I just address a second of your question? Sure, this is going to take a lot of education out of our local authority for the idea of using drones. And we're going to need to educate off on what's the improper use of drones, because the FAA is on the job of it, as far as I know, because everybody I talk to is unaware that this even regulation is at this point. So it's going to take some education out of us, as well as our offices as well. We're not going to be responding to deciding everybody that has a drone in the air. I will come to later. This is for the improper use of drones. Some people have bad intentions. And that's what we're trying to regulate. We're not trying to regulate the drone industry. So we don't need the work. We don't have the time to deal with that. But if I do get a phone call from our resident that is scared to death that a drone is over her yard and is unauthorized, we should at least be able to go investigate it. And if the person is not cooperating with us, and they're not complying with our request to stop what they're doing, and it's harmful to the general purpose, we should at least have the authority to issue a fine for that. And just to reiterate what Tom Constance said, I see the court systems. We have cases every day that get thrown out of technicalities. Maybe at some point, the future legislation does progress, and we can go over a lot of different drones in some of the state laws. And at that point, we don't have the need for it, which is why I go. But right now, we have none. So that's what I'm trying to address.
To, I see they end up in the back, non-accident voters, and they're not actually leaving unless they're serving in a judicial capacity as an employee or consultant, or some kind of capacity to assist the leave. So I would not call them. Can we go back here?
These three two-sage issues are just a quick follow-up. You call the FAA, they're automatically drones. It actually says, if it's illegal, call the police already. I hope you knew that. There's a gray area there where it's really in charge, that there's a violation. That's what the FAA would ask someone to do. Also, this is a quick clarification of line of sight. It seems to read that that's for recreational use only. Am I reading that right? It talks about model aircraft as a reference to the definition of model aircraft for recreational. I just get clarification on that, because that's obviously important to me as a commercial operator.
Chief.
Could you just point it out there? You're reading, so in section nine dash four D, no person shall operate in model aircraft beyond visual line of sight. The definition of model aircraft is for strictly for hobby or recreational purposes. So that wouldn't apply to high commercial operators. Is that correct?
Mr. Sli. Derek, I'm moderator. You're reading that is accurate. I would agree with you.
Carol, with the look at E sixty, Marlin Street. Just a question for you, Mr. Moderator. Does this include, did this include some case that was similar that happened out in Western Massachusetts where a company had asked for permission to cross my friend's orchard so that they could do a survey for the purposes of putting a pipeline. The owners of the property did not want that. They actually put a stop to it. They were not allowed access. And the company used drones to do the surveys. This, or even that?
Chief.
Is this a particular bylaw or not? How would the FAA regulations require the permission from any landlord in order to apply the bylaw?
Thank you. I'm Eric, going to bridge my road. I just had a question about how many complaints we've actually received on this issue, or whether we're just trying to create a relation in advance of something that we don't really know whether it's a problem or not.
Chief.
So I just want to reiterate, we're not creating a regulation. These are already in place. We're creating is an enforcement power for the local police department. When you said that from early, you follow the FAA, they follow the police department. At this point, I don't know what we can possibly do. So with the regulation that the FAA has in place, we pick for the one that essentially we can enforce or allow, whether it be criminal or through the young process. So as far as complaints go, I, we received a few complaints, but they're more private. I have a drone line, you know, P M I A V R. So we go down and discuss it with my husband's boss. And that would change if we're going to see those complaints at all. Or would I anticipate that people using this technology in an illegal way? They absolutely do. There, we have the internet, which is a lot of good for everybody, but we have a significant amount of internet costs. That's not to say that I want to shut down the internet, but we, you know, that chain of attack essentially. And I do see that we will have some of the issues into this. Like, you know, one thing is I like to see people trespassing in, you know, video behavior with the book, you know, when they shouldn't be with the man, which is the part of the user's home. And yes, there are laws that we could, you know, pursue. But when it comes to specifically the name of the drone and as the owner, it's going to be difficult to prove. And I do feel that, because I see it on a daily basis as a legal office. We almost have to connect the person community in the moment at this point in order to prosecute these cases. That's how difficult it's getting before. So I hope I answered your question. I mean, I think I give out the bar to many other chiefs that are around with the same thought. I was like, what are we going to do with this? That's all I have. So we're just trying to take some more steps to be these people.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Hi, Mr. Atkinson, meeting to Mill Street. I live about a quarter mile from the Thompson Club. We have the three-town border between Peavy, Middleton, and North Reading. So again, my biggest concern, in addition to enforcement, is uniformity of regulation. Given the mobility of these things, this thing could potentially in three different towns over its operating area, and North Reading would not necessarily have jurisdiction, depending on the relative location of the operator and the drone itself. So I guess my biggest concern is uniformity of regulation and regulation between towns and cities and counties potentially. So I prefer to see this salt at the state level rather than the local. That being said, if the state won't take action, I can understand why you'd want some enforcement power. So, you know, I see your point, but I'm not sure it's the town's problem to solve. I think it's more if you handle it at the state level than the local. And you throw Linfield into the mix if you're in, you know, up Main Street, the Main Street, you know, Linfield, North Reading, and Peavy line, Catherine Drive, and you've got potentially another town in the mix. So again, that would be a concern both from a court case, and I'd like the legal people to address that, as well as just in general, you know, difficulty of enforcement. We have town lines and borders, given the fact that drones can move freely from town to town. Would it be based on the location of the operator or the location of the drone, who has jurisdiction? You know, does Peavy have to fight North Reading? Who's going to prosecute the case? Or Middleton? And I'd like, again, town council potentially to address that.
Chief.
Chief Murphy. As far as jurisdiction's all, wherever the drone is violated, if it's your home and you follow your own, the drone is over your home, that's where the jurisdiction lies. Wherever the person is that we're able to hunt. And I'm not saying that we're going to be able to prosecute these cases successfully, because I just don't know yet. But as far as the jurisdiction goes, wherever the complaint can, we'll, we'll have to take it as it is and try to resolve it. It's not going to be an easy bylaw, of course, there's no question about it. And I do wish that the state would take some action. I just don't know. We don't see anything. At least at this point, I haven't notified or anything. So this is just a small piece in the North Reading to allow us to enforce. If it's violated, somebody can, you have to remember, it's the five fifty-nine that we're trying to address it, not these drones, these issues.
Yes.
I move.
Move to the question, although it's available.
Aye.
We have the motion. This is required. Any opposed? Motion carries. So on the main motion, requires the jury vote, follows the paper.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the code of North Reading, general bylaw, chapter one fifty-eight, as an amendment, so reform on streets and sidewalks, by deleting the text thereof in its entirety and inserting in its place a new text as printed in article twenty-six of the law, and further amend the list of fines under chapter one provisions, general provisions, one dash five, op. B, op. three, violations and penalties in accordance with section D of this bylaw, all as printed in article twenty-six of the law.
Recommend for the board's like, Mr. Fisher.
Board's like, recommend.
The finance committee is still. For the discussion.
So this particular bylaw has been in front of the voters many times, and we continue to struggle with this issue. And it's really trying to protect the people that want to walk along the commercial areas in town during the winter time. So the tweets here to this particular bylaw is really designed to strengthen existing bylaw. You could get rid of the fines, because we're trying to advocate it. And there's going to be some work on our part to continue to work with the business community to advocate that we comply. But this does now raise the fines to three hundred dollars per day. You allow the insurance of the fines in the first offense rather than existing warnings. And our police departments are pretty busy. We haven't had many people to do police comment. And the workload is pretty heavy. So to have them up there giving warnings and giving small fines, we tried that, and it didn't work. So that's why we made these amendments to this bylaw, in hopes that the business community gets the message. We understand the term on their business. We know this is a challenging subject, but at the same time, public safety is number one. And you know, even myself, I've struggled with this bylaw. And we've voted against it in the past. But I've seen the non-compliance. Something has to change. So this is a good step, in all ways we go along, working with the business community to provide it and keep the public safe.
Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, thank you for, uh, through this article. What's your like? Thank you very much. Um, the question would be, opening sentence, what could be eight, dash nine, where it says, tenant or occupant and, in case they use a tenant, but they continue to, for any other person having a care. So, um, I believe that the owner is ultimately responsible for the property in front of, or sidewalk in front of the property, that the, a fear for me, that the room should be the tenant, occupant, owner are responsible for. Because if the, if the owner, if the, sorry, the tenant or occupant were to refuse to pay because they had in the contract agreement that the property moved south, then, uh, that they would be able to defer to the property. But this is written in such a way, is it only if there's no tenant or occupant. So that's, the enforcement of that is who I am concerned. I understand the intent. I like, I like the idea that it's simplified. But that's, that's the concern with that. Thank you.
Mr. Gill.
Ben, you threw you, Mr. Moderator. The intention here is in fact to enforce the bylaw by approaching the occupant of a particular property, be it business owner, or tenant of some sort, as the other person is on site. These changes will be explained, and also contain the ability of the town to recover the loss required of the cost of moving, just as much as the town required to do so because of the fines, where ultimately, the owner would be the, maybe the place, average of the town to recover the loss of fine not paid by the occupant or tenant to move the position. So the first step would be the tenant or occupant, if there's aren't fines, not in the fine, and cost associated with the home, and then the assets to the owner. And similarly, if your question, there was a vacancy, we would ultimately direct that to you.
That is a question to you.
Uh, if I may, it's on. Thank you. Uh, I, I understand the intent, I believe you on that. I just think that the wording should really be tenant, occupant, and, and the owner, because this really just sets attention on if there's no tenant or occupant there, putting the owner's something property. So maybe wording is a little bit flawed, but with the, uh, people.
For the discussion. Mr. Scholz.
I was the one colleague on our board that was against the statute. I didn't want to get time to explain why. The purpose of the statute is to have a clear sidewalk on Main Street between your commercial area. The statute right now, as you read, it says that commercial business has to shop outside. Our twenty is a mix of areas that are commercial or residential, and also areas that don't have a sidewalk at all. Sidewalks are not completely used to weigh around twenty-eight. To me, we have to look at the, the, how the town, how the sidewalks, because even if this statute is off to a T by all the businesses, you wouldn't have any sidewalk from Reading to Arrow on twenty-eight. That's the purpose of the statute. So to me, we think it's a different look at this. Also, the situation where you have these small businesses owners. And my past life as president of the chamber of commerce, they would come to me. I had one owner that had a stent with his car. And it was a year or two or three years ago, there was a ton of snow. He got a warning or a ticket for not showing his stuff. It's a little different than like at our homes, with the gloves, my gloves, your, your bell box. Here you're talking about two lanes of twenty-eight square on the highway. He invited, most of these small businesses owners do not have the equipment to move this. And also, I don't think it's the best use of our, at least it's not, you know, the FAA after the snowstorm. I think there's a lot more, have a safety issue they could be doing to take any businesses. I just wanted to. I think the purpose of the statute is to have a sidewalk that's where they can point me. The way the statute is not going to accomplish that goal. I have reason I'm not going to go for this.
Matt, here comes twenty-four Washington Street. It doesn't specifically say, from what I've seen, I'd just like some clarifications, whether or not this is specifically targeted commercial businesses, or residence, or both. Because I live at the intersection of Orchard and Washington and Elm, and there's a lot of snowplow down on the sidewalks. If I have to get out there in twenty-four hours, sometimes five to six feet hot, I'd have a lot of equipment. So obviously, I want to keep the sidewalks clean. But if, you know, I'm facing three hundred dollar fine, six foot snowbags can move in twenty-four hours, I'm not going to go to the hospital to try to get it done in twenty-four hours.
Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Moderator, this is for non-residential properties.
Mr. CEO.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to address in, uh, what's been, like, Mr. Schultz, uh, on the, uh, Main Street not being cleared from border to border. I think in most towns, that would be the case anyway. You can't do that. But eighty percent of your cleared sidewalk is a lot better than no percent cleared. So anytime you can have a sidewalk cleared, it should be cleared, to say, specifically on, uh, Main Street, it is a very dangerous environment. I know that personally, as someone who has been a runner in my lifetime, knowing that it's dangerous that you come to a point in the road, that sidewalk that is not cleared, you have to run out to the street, and you have to bank the traffic. It's extremely dangerous. You know, it's not, little woman that can kill across sidewalk from the post office, because crossing the road, she'll say, get out to the sidewalk, but the sidewalk was not cleared, therefore, unfortunate issues. So that's only once you think, that's, that's the only time that it ever happened. So clearly, the sidewalk, it is vital. I see people walking shopping bags, walking down the street, older people who are forced to walk onto the roadway. And it's just very dangerous. So when we are able to clear thirty percent, forty percent, or eighty percent of the roadway, we should clear as much as we can. And then the town has its authority and the district. Thank you.
Motion to move this article to a hold. Move to the question. That would be me? Yes. Move to the question. Hold, be.
Aye.
On motion. Hold, be, please, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Aye, I'll take it. My talents, please step forward. Please, please, please. All the ayes. Mr. Lam.
Eight. Thirty-nine. Thirty-six.
Was that, you went like this, might not have done a crazy. Eighty-three, four, twenty-four against. Motion carries. I'm not making a hearing quite the time. Article twenty-seven.
I move to amend the code of North Reading's twenty-by-law by adding to my article twenty-seven, Main Street units of slowway, as specified in article twenty-seven of the law, provided that in section two hundred dash one fifty-eight applicability, delete the following property from the Main Street table, twenty-one point one nine meters, map twenty-four, parcel thirty-six, ninety-seven Main Street, stop truck parking. In sections two hundred dash one sixty A, delete mall decan dwelling permitted by right, replace with mall decan dwelling permitted by special permit issued by the Community Planning Commission. And in two hundred dash one sixty K, and in two hundred dash one sixty B, at the end of the second sentence, insert the words, in the Highway Business Zone District. And the final one is to delete the following property from the table described in the map, amend it to twenty-one point one nine meters, map twenty-four, parcel thirty-six, ninety-seven Main Street, stop truck parking.
Does the board's like, Mr. Nader, recommend?
Sorry, I just turned my time a little. Board's like, recommend. Three to.
For the finance committee is still. No, no act of the party from the finance committee. For the community planning commission, you would just. For the Community Planning Commission, you would just need my recommendation?
CPC's recommendation.
Further discussion?
Thank you. Just to give some background, per Article twenty-seven, the purpose of the proposed zoning changes goes to revitalize a key central area of the Main Street corridor to encourage downtown-style development. It would allow for some residential development as a component of Main Street's development. And this includes multifamily housing and senior living on the Main Street of housing. This is a follow-up action item from MNC's short-term economic development study for the Main Street, done in 2015, which was to bring housing to the central area of Main Street in order to support business activity and increase vitality. The article introduces some residential development in a limited area without opening up the entire Main Street corridor to housing. For parking and building coverage, parking requirements are two spaces per unit, which is consistent with townwide requirements in most zoning districts. The building coverage on each lot remains 70% maximum, 30% open space. Limitations on residential, multifamily or senior housing in the Main Street district, the residential units would be allowed, but would be limited to 80% of the total building area on a given parcel. The remaining 20% must be in other use allowed by a ready or by special permanent in home businesses, for example, retail offices. As far as the existing quota proportion of residential to other, the proposed 80% to 20% split was based on the current zoning regulations, which allows 60-foot height limit. The number of stories would be estimated at five, based on that 60-foot height, the building weight. One floor, the ground floor only, could be soon to be dedicated to retail office or other commercial use. The remaining floors above, four stories of residential. This is because retail is unlikely in separate floors spaces. And all floors would be estimated to be the same size. So there's also a lot of less residential and more commercial. For example, a project that would have either two or three floors of residential, the one floor of retail would not have to be a five-story building with four stories of residential. The CPC helped it publicating on the 16th. They voted to amend the article with following changes. As Mr. Reddick explained to me, multifamily housing would be allowed by special permanent, not by right, as originally proposed. The Main Street's senior housing would still be allowed by right. And also, we just wanted to clarify, some other use allowed by right or special permanent in private businesses in our town. Just to clarify our intent there. At the discussion at the Board of Public Affairs, the Board of Selectmen, their meeting on page 22 was what led to eliminating 97 Main Street parcels with less retail use to be included. Thank you.
Further discussion? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Rogers, 39 Tower Hill Road. This sounds like a terrific idea, and we need to do to make North Reading more livable. Can you just elaborate a little bit on that last point, the 97 Main Street, why that got eliminated? That's a pretty sizable piece to propose.
Mr. Prisco?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we're trying to take this in small bites as we move along. And you're obviously just one on another in front of us again in the future. So we explore this idea of the grid bar and allow it to evolve. When you start looking at a parcel that's 21 acres, and you sit back and you think of the potential of a structure that has five floors, four of them being residential, it could have a negative impact on us, because the schools, every time we spend a travel to our schools, it's at least $50,000 of all things, the school community would tell me I was wrong. And so, we want to thrive with these smaller parcels. So I'm going to request that this one left for now, see how this works, and then maybe reevaluate as a split that you heard earlier, like 20 for the future. There could be some more on that. That's the main reason why.
Mr. CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was treated to both, so I would like to hear the seven arguments on this idea.
Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, when you state upfront, I wholeheartedly endorse this concept. I wholeheartedly endorse the work of the Community Planning Commission, the MNC study, the attempt to create a downtown, the attempt to increase economic development, and bring some additional revenue, commercial revenue to North Reading to relieve the residential attachment. So, but at this particular time, a lot of favor pulled the fold of this particular proposal. Originally, it was proposed the stop shop was going to be eliminated. Again, Mr. Prisco, I take it there is two potentials to why they shouldn't have come out at this particular time. That being said, if you look at the processes that are directly involved, the likelihood of development, with the exception of one that I'm aware of, in the near future is very small. When the plan had been before the laws, like a few weeks ago, I actually thought if we're going to do this, we should have a standard area. You know, that was a big most, and what you're talking about, basically from, what's it sounding? Car wash, and the, uh, park, north to. Which is, because we go to 62, we're going to be quite deep to Route 62. It's just one side of the street. So what you're talking about, having a donkey, a saddle, a kitty, just going anywhere. There are too small of parcels that are too small, you don't have to do anything of any consequence with it, as far as putting a subject system into putting in a multi-story building. Because of what it is, and the size of the property, the square footage of it. Very few parcels, with the exception of the Heather property, where the moderator has expressed an interest in doing something there of this nature. I think right now, to, that's the only parcel that I'm aware of, with this, I think there's a suggested proposal to engage with this, something about that. To me, I think what's going to hinge upon the success of this rezoning truly is some sort of waste treatment. Not having a storage room on Route 28, but our priority right now is to get storage room across the street. Excuse me. And that's getting closer. And with that, we're going to see something like a, as far as getting storage room on Route 28, that's a decade or more down the road. So I think what's going to have to happen is, I think the town is going to have to take the initiative to put together some sort of waste treatment facility somewhere in the area, this targeted area, in order to evolve this kind of growth. I personally express some concerns in relation to small, I think, not the lightest being taken here, just the one east of the side of Route 28. I think there's greater potential on the west of the side, knowing the owners, knowing the parcels, knowing what the potential is there. So I would urge the, the Atlantic Commission, to the map with a standard area here, or something like that would, and you should take a good hard look at it, having the town be there. But I don't believe that this is going to be private money involved with the production of an package treatment plan for this area and this region. I think the town is going to have to take the initiative to do so. So I think we should put the fact before the policy of the year. And again, don't get me wrong, I think this is a fabulous idea, this concept, and we should be embracing it. I think it's just a little bit premature. So I'm not going to support a zoning change at this particular time. I'd like to see it expanded, zoning area. Once we tackle it, and I'd also like us to have some sort of a long-term handling in relation to what rules the town authority going to play in order to initiate the sidewalk development, stimulate the growth of this particular area, and everything's going to happen without us doing it. But I think we're a little bit premature. I think the area that's being targeted, it's small, the likelihood of any change actually taking place is unlikely. So for that reason, I'm not going to support it at this, at this time. I think this is a terrific idea to stick around a little bit later.
Further discussion? Mr. Prisco?
So I was one of the board members that, what's in favor of this? And, you know, I've been here, I've been here that long in town, for at least 15 years, I'm on the board seven. And I've seen this around some really good ideas, and I've also seen this to get off some of the ideas. You can let them go too long. And, you know, this approach is a kind of a walk before you can run approach. And then there really is no harm in us voting this tonight, and it's a small sample size, and it's one side of the street. Which shows, by the way, with the Heritage Building, which is next door to Kitty's. And, you know, no one has an interest at all to see what any of these properties will do once this change happens. But you've got to remember, we're going to change the use of these properties to allow residential property. And then everyone knows, I know a lot of people here that are going to sit in these chairs in front of me, know the impact that residential could potentially have on this whole system. So let's get these small number of parcels, and they're small in size, and let's see if we can get them to move. We already know of one that we're creating with this topic that we can ask. And I think we can learn some lessons from it over the next year. And then the next year, Heritage, not meeting it, we should take advantage of what's in there to say. Let's expand the walls and some lessons learned when we expand it. And I think that's a good issue to talk about. So I think we can do our own favor.
Further discussion? Sir?
John Rogers, 39 Tower Hill Road. I was just wondering if the CPC could respond to what Mr. O'Leary was saying, because I imagine you, too, wanted to see this evaded. I'm just wondering if you're, how, how are you looking at your proposal in light of those issues?
Mr. De La?
All right, so, you know, I didn't get the small area. And we did look at, actually, last year, I think it was October, Town Meeting last year, that we actually looked at all of them now, hominates, maybe in all of these. And we really started thinking about it, and it's a big stretch of road. And residential is a lot more valuable than commercial properties. So knowing that, back, just really looking at, and to kind of echo what Mr. Prisco was saying, you know, we're trying to log before we run here. If we opened up the whole road, also, that we could get a, the whole road could always change to a residential, and it would, or we could get it up. But just to start small, see where we go from here, the parcels that we picked, and the area that we picked, actually, far as the waste water study that was going on, Town Meeting. So that's why we picked this specific area, because we're actually looking at the waste water. We're looking at, you know, we've done an MAPC7 in that specific area, which called off the wall. So that's why we picked a small area. And I think if it is great, and it's small, and we're a little scared that it works, okay? We might kind of know it doesn't work good at all, and now we'll restrict it to a small area. It always will modify next, next year. But to open it all the way up, it'd be a little immediate here, it's a small area.
Mr. Atkins, 31 Street. In that vein of walk before you run, it seems to me this might be part of the town master plan, planning process for the next master plan. I'd like to see, before you go ahead to make any zoning changes, as to sort of develop a roadmap, including things like water use, sewage treatment, and so on, before making any changes at all, include that as part of the master plan, planning process. Would anybody else? Thank you.
Mr. Prisco?
No one disagrees. It should be integrated into the future master plan that we're going to, that we funded tonight. While we already have a plan in place, we have a strategic plan that we've evolved. We have an economic development community that's been put in place. And then we would work towards expanding our industrial base, that's the hope to be the goal here. And then try to integrate this around mixed use. One of the things we could feedback for government offices, that there's not enough individual living slots for people to live in the community, in the city. So this kind of goes along with the goals of the governor, also goes along with the goals of the Board of Selectmen, you know, and the master plan that's already in place. It's already, the one that placed already talks about expanding our industrial base. So I don't think waiting to get the master plan completed, should stop this, because it's pretty much already in there, that idea, with expanding the industrial base. And that's all we're trying to do, and creating this mixed use is something that should be expanded upon in the next master plan.
Further discussion?
Thanks, I also do want to say that one of the reasons that the master plan request is for $85,000, rather than the full estimated cost of about $110,000, is because in the last three years, the CPC has been doing pretty substantial work in preparation for doing the master plan. And one of those major pieces was the short-term economic development study for Route 28, which did focus on that area. So it absolutely needs to be a very important part of our master plan. But some of that work leading up to the master plan has been done. And so this was one of the recommendations that came from that study.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just as a clarification, my position here, I have no way to advocate opening up all of Route 28 for zoning. Again, we're talking about basically from Main Street to Route 62, just an element, just a little surface of something. It may be down to the commercial properties. But in relation to a wastewater master plan, in an MNC study, some of those studies we had, wastewater treatment, this is the, again, the only process that we're aware of right now, that's potentially developed, but we don't want to decide. Wow, it's a separate property, they're just putting a separate subject system in there already, not necessarily facilitating internet with special form wastewater treatment. And if you think about the processes that are involved here, it would have to be some private, private order, a little package treatment, that tried to tie in several private property orders. Who wants to help the hostage do labor, package treatment on their property at setting rates? It's going to fall upon the community to facilitate, and to make sure that that works well, and that we have enough confidence, so private property owners to have enough confidence in that, and to wouldn't get built necessarily, because of the waste water treatment. They can give them a lot of substantial more development, commercial property, and they will tax it on the community. So we get that, we get this very idea, which we should do with it, which we should pursue with it. I don't have any, we can just take it down to the road or whatever. Because no one will be able to, I just believe, the less the bill of the town takes the bull out of the horse, shows the initiative, takes the initiative to tackle wastewater treatment, so a number of these parcels clearly developed. And I don't see the town doing much of that. We'd love them to resolve any section, sorry, right now, of the section of the community. Just as a, for, 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 you know, and I know we're going to get more subject systems. We need to do something else, small sale, perhaps, or something, town is a thing to share. So I think, I don't, just think in another six months, a year, if it didn't, then we'll have a better idea. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Prisco? I just think it means to be aware of, what Mr. O'Leary is asking for, that the town would take over the responsibility of developing manufacturing, subject system, storage plant, package plant, taxpayer money funded, and then why would they save every earth of the betters? But that's not going to get done in a year. That's going to be some planning, some finance, you've got to develop the finance and do that. I think his idea is worthy of exploration, we should look into it, absolutely. But that's a significant investment, and it has to be considered when we get the funds and how we do it. And I'm all for, definitely in favor of listening and learning about how we do it. But if this is a great idea to go now, to help us move forward, to learn something about this. We don't know what these commercial properties would be. Maybe they will take it on, and they won't. That's okay, that's their money, they can do what they want. But you give them the opportunity to actually make investments in their property, rather than using public funds to invest in something that benefits, rather than anything commercial property.
Further discussion? All right, seeing on just far as two-thirds, oh, this is a zoning article. All will be able to say aye? Aye. Ho. No. So the zoning article needs two-thirds, I'm going to go to my end.
Thirty-six.
Vote.
Eight. Nine.
Motion carries. Article twenty-eight. I'm sorry, seventy-nine, I'm sorry. Seventy-nine, yes, one now.
Mr. Marder, the group of others, and this is starting on a little high school, Marder did track a David's program, who's who took a lot of that, that's twenty-seven, as a set of, had an article twenty-eight, just to turn to the board.
Recommend, from the board's side?
Board is likely to recommend.
My intercommittee, is it, is it like that? So the school committee, just go ahead here.
School committee, in answer to the recommend, can I just have twenty minutes to make a presentation?
I get too hard and loud.
You guys are the all of us, thank you. This side of the twelfth, the higher school committee, uh, based on the laws of Chuck DeWitt, who chaired the secondary school, political committee, uh, Chuck David, the original business director, Albera Middle School High School, after Dr. Trump, Dr. Trump served as superintendent of schools in operating from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and ten, uh, he was responsible for the community planning, and the British, he's in education, from nineteen ninety-three, he was extremely passionate about child development, and built the British line, special education, where we're operating, continues today, Dr. Trump was also mastermind of the rehabilitation, uh, renovation, rebuilding all the operating schools, satellite school in late nineteen nineties, continued with the old school in the early two thousands, continued further with the bachelor elementary school, being rebuilt and renovated in two thousand and six, uh, and had approximately an after the laws, particularly the laws were reversed, and then culminated in division for the middle school, high school, if you're presenting today, Dr. Trump advocated for this project, uh, someone was opposed to it, but I was too ambitious, too much training, uh, but he pushed forward, uh, on the rejuvenated high school and the renovated middle school, and I think, uh, but I asked you to consider this, this launch, uh, this title, to make this, uh, this is working out, Dr. 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 Thank you very much.
Further discussion? Saying aye, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Frisco.
Mr. Marder, I move to adjourn this meeting, C P C.
I have a motion to adjourn, any discussion, saying aye, all those in favor please.
Aye.
Vote. Then, all the volunteers, the town's board staff, thank you very much.